I call the January 13th, 2020 city council meeting to order. Briggs?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Shivers?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Okay, first order of business, approval of minutes. Start the work session. December 9th?
Second.
Briggs?
Yes.
Nichols?
Epstein.
Miller? Shivers?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Call the regular session minutes for December 9th, 2019.
I move we approve the minutes for December 9th regular session.
Second.
Briggs?
Yes.
Nichols?
Epstein.
Yes.
Shivers?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Okay, first order of business by two readings by title only in passage. Bill number 2020-01, an ordinance amending Chapter 38, Article X, Article 10, Schedules 13 and 15 of the traffic and vehicle schedule for the Mexico City Code. Mr. Sligel?
Yes, Your Honor, this is a sign cleanup ordinance. The onsite signage does not match the schedule. Upon reviewing it to cover the details, Drew Willford will be presenting this item.
Good evening, Council. As Bruce mentioned, this is a cleanup of our traffic schedules on South Clark Street between Monroe and Love. I'm sorry, North Clark Street between Monroe and Love. And what's currently signed out there is primarily no parking. The traffic schedules show that area to be 12-hour limit unmetered parking at the moment. And so what we're recommending is to change the traffic schedules to amend Chapter 38, Article 10, Schedule 13, Section F, which specifically is the North Clark between Love and Monroe, to be then, I'm sorry, that's extending it from Monroe to Love. And then deleting Chapter 38, Article 10, Section 15, which is Section C, that was the 12-hour limit unmetered parking area. So you'd have a continuous no parking area along South Clark Street and then North Clark between Monroe and Love. In essence, making it from High Street all the way up to Love Street, no parking. If you have any questions, be happy to answer them. Otherwise, staff would recommend that the council proceed with two readings by title only in passage of the attached ordinance.
Any question? Or motion?
Make a motion to read number, bill number 2020-01.
Briggs?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Miller? Shivers?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes. Bill number 2020-01, an ordinance amending Chapter 38, Article 10, Schedules 13 and 15 of the traffic and vehicle schedule of the Mexico City Code. Move for second reading, bill number 2020-01.
Second.
Briggs?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Shivers?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes. Bill number 2020-01, ordinance amending Chapter 13, Article 10, Schedules 13 and 15 of the traffic and vehicle schedule of the Mexico City Code. Move for passage of bill number 2020-01.
Second.
Briggs?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Shivers?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Other business? You have a statement. Mr. Sligel?
Yes, the first is we have a staff report for the purchase of trash receptacles in the downtown area for Village Square. VSA did approach the city to participate in replacing the downtown trash receptacles. They did receive a grant to assist with that. To cover the details of what's being proposed, we'll turn to Chad Schumaker.
Good evening. So as you'll notice in the staff letter, the 1920 annual budget does not have an allowance for the purchase of trash receptacles for the downtown. As Bruce said, the VSA approached the city after the budgeting process was complete and asked us if we could do something about this need. They were willing to go out and try to find some grant funds to help make this happen if we would do the basic business of specifying and ordering these trashcans. As you can see from the letter, they came up with $10,000 to cost share this improvement. When we discussed that with Bruce, he directed us to go ahead and find a way to make the whole project happen rather than making them go back for more or doing this in phases. So the receptacles will be paid for with the $10,000 that VSA has acquired. And they have that money in hand. And then the remaining funds will be coming from the budgeted general fund project reserve. Parks Maintenance Department will be responsible for installing the receptacles. And any needed pad construction will be handled by the street department. There is a map up there. You can see there are, there is one trashcan being eliminated. We're basically moving it a few feet to the west and putting it in the parking lot instead of on the corner of the street. And then there are two downtown on a corner where we currently really didn't have any trashcans. That'd be that northeast corner of downtown where there's a mailbox. And then the two opposing corners don't have trashcans. The other new addition location you see there is simply where the sidewalks had to be replaced to do that water main break this winter. There's not a pad there. We'll be able to surface mount that trashcan directly to the existing new concrete. So we sent requests for bids to 16 vendors. Advertisements placed in the ledger. Received bids from 10 vendors. Frine Associates of North Kansas City, Missouri submitted the best bid. And we recommend that council approve the purchase of 22 Pilot Rock model CNR/SS2-36D round steel trap trash receptacles with doors from Frine Associates of North Kansas City, Missouri for the bid price of $17,388. It is interesting in the bids that they actually have underbid RJ Thomas Manufacturing, who are the people that actually manufacture these trashcans. So they wanted the business. So. And this is a relatively standard model. Years down the road, we wouldn't have any problem if a car ran over one or something that we'd be able to replace one of these and it would still look like it probably fit.
Is it somewhat like the ones then that we?
Doesn't look anything like what you have. What you have now is steel and wood mesh. These will be all steel with powder coat. They should last a lot longer than the ones that we had. The ones that are out there have been rebuilt at least two times, almost completely. And there's no metal really left to rebuild to, so.
It's your pleasure.
I move that we purchase the 22-36 gallon round steel tanks from Frine Associates of North Kansas City, Missouri for $70,388.
Second.
Second.
Briggs?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Shivers?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Okay, staff report on to relocate the Amarin gas mains.
Yes, Your Honor, if council remembers, this was brought before council in November. And there was questions the council had regarding a couple of things that you wanted more information on. And so we have obtained that information for you and have brought it back. And to cover the additional details of this staff report, once again, Drew Willford.
Good evening again. As Bruce mentioned, this is somewhat of a follow-up to the November 18th meeting. And so I'm going to convey everything in a short PowerPoint. It's only eight slides, so I'm going to try to go through it fairly quickly. If you have questions, I'll have a time period sort of at the end there to discuss them. But you're welcome to also interrupt if anything comes to mind that you see on the screen here. This is the Falcon Street project. We're going to start off with just a quick review of the project. And this extends Falcon Street from Fairgrounds to Amelia Drive and also includes sidewalks. As you can see on the screen here, one of the main reasons for the staff report is the amount of cut that is in here. And if you can see and follow my mouse cursor on the screen, you're looking at about two and a half feet of cut that's required just from top of existing ground, the top of the pavement. So another foot plus on that to be about three and a half feet total is what you'd be looking at, which leads into the reason for the staff report being the utility relocation that's required. Amarin has two gas mains that run down Fairgrounds. And they're on right in the project area. One's a six-inch main. That main feeds the south half of Mexico. And then another one being a four-inch main, both need relocation. Normally, a city would have the utility pay the costs for that. But in this case, when land was transferred, they retained rights to their utilities. And therefore, the responsibility is on the city to pay for. So keep that in mind as we proceed here. We're going to cover just essentially four or three quick topics. And they're going to include the transportation network as a whole and the traffic impact for extending Falcon Street. Multimodal aspect of it being the construction of sidewalks. Finally, the impacts to future development. And then we'll have our staff report recommendation and any questions you may have on that time. So looking at the impacts to the street and to traffic, there are two key things that come to my mind when I'm looking at this extension. And that is, number one, it provides a detour for Teal Lake Road, that intersection, Teal Lake Road and Fairgrounds. That's important for a couple of reasons. Number one, if we ever have a crash at that intersection, there is no current detour, except we're going all the way back to South Clark Street. That also allows truck traffic to use a detour. And that, as you may know, Teal Lake Road is a truck route, which has trucks carrying things all the way to our industrial park, west side of town. And then the second item is alternative for ingress and egress in Teal Lake Village, which also is important for emergency services and then just general resident interest that gives them options entering and exiting their location of residence. So a couple of important points there. And then moving on to the multimodal aspect of things, I'm dividing this up into a look at it from a neighborhood scale, but also a look at it from a community scale. And so we'll have just two quick slides on this. Looking at this, I've got a map up on the screen that shows proposed sidewalk and also existing sidewalk. What's in blue is the existing sidewalk. And the red would then be the proposed sidewalk that we're looking at. And it was mentioned in, I think, the November 18th meeting about planning. Planning is a really important step to phased development. And we'll cover future development here in just a second. But if you'll notice, this all won't be completed at once. So this would be something that would be a staged effort to provide all these different neighborhoods interconnectivity. So you would be benefiting residents who are in the Mexico Apartments. And I apologize if that's not the correct name for the facility there, but Mexico Apartments, the Hope Center, which is also an extension, I think, of the Arthur Center, if I understand correctly, Teal Lake Village itself, and then also some of the residents off of the Falcon Drive and the Birdland area would benefit from this with the interconnectivity shown here. The other item I'd like to take a moment to mention is Teal Lake Village sidewalk. One of the questions was asked about payment for the sidewalk that's within the Teal Lake Village premises. And we did contact the developer, and the developer is willing to pay for that portion of sidewalk. So I wanted to mention that because that was a specific concern. Looking at it from a community scale, now, this is a little bit harder to read, so I apologize, but it's showing a larger area here. And when you're looking at a community scale, we look at neighborhood interconnectivity. So not only are all of those places mentioned before connected together, but then you also look at it from the idea of facility accessibility. So we've got residential, commercial, recreational, entertainment, and, well, all of these facilities that are now made accessible to individuals within the area. That's a very important part of planning and also providing a place that people enjoy living. All of those things lead to an increased quality of life, but also increased community appeal. So all these things are kind of interrelated. You'll notice some of these things overlap. And that is part of the planning process, making sure everything works together. So for future development, we also looked at that. And the adjacent land to the east of Teal Lake Village is currently zoned R1. And that's approximately 45 acres. And being zoned R1 means it's zoned for residential development. So it's not likely at the moment that it would be commercial development. And so looking at that, it's going to need a transportation network that's going to be safe and efficient. And the way we accomplish that is through proper planning and taking into account future development and growth in the area. And so that kind of brings all of the different items that have come up since the November 18th meeting into light. And at this moment, we would be looking at, the costs have not changed. So we would be looking at a cost to relocate those utilities of being $31,524. The city has budgeted $55,000 for the Falcon Street extension project. So this would be within budget. And so at this time, we would recommend council approval of the relocation of the Amarin gas mains at the estimated $31,524 cost. And be happy to answer any questions that you'd have at this time.
I would like to make the comment. After we had our discussion in November, I did go out there with Kenzie so he could show me. And when you stand there, when you stand there, right there, you stand on the street there and you look toward Teal Lake, you know where it would go, it's pretty clear that there's any houses going in back there, like you said. If there's any homes going in back there, that definitely would end up being a cross street. I mean, you obviously are going to extend that straight out and go back to new development. Plus, you've got an awful lot of houses there in that development. There's a lot of people there. There's 19 units there, what, 38 different living areas? That's quite a bit of traffic. And if, you know, a situation happens that you can't get, say, something happens down here at the end of the street, there's really no way for anybody to get out of there. So I thought that was real, just to go see it, you know, just not only from the arrow view, but to see it that way. So that's what I, that's what I thought about it anyway. And I do have appreciated your presentation on it.
Well, thank you.
Yes.
Anyway, I would be willing to put motion on the floor.
No, I have a few questions first.
So first of all, your $55,000 budget was to build the road, not including the?
Correct.
So actually, this is going to be a $90,000 project in the end, probably.
Yeah, very real.
Because you said, well, we budgeted $55,000, but that was for the actual road. This is all extra.
Very real possibility on that. And should that come up, we'd be looking at reallocating funds from other projects in order to cover that cost.
Right. Well, it just made it sound like, oh, we planned this. Now, this wasn't planned. This part wasn't. As far as you're dealing with a truck route, I mean, good luck getting an 18-wheeler to turn in there. I mean, I don't know if you've been down there, but that street's pretty narrow, but.
Better than nothing in my mind, but you're absolutely right. It would be difficult, but whenever you're dealing with an emergency situation, it's always good to have redundancy.
And then another topic that gets brought up is safety. Well, if you go back to your other slide with the proposed sidewalks.
Uh, let's see if I can. Well, I moved the wheel the wrong way.
So right there on Teal Lake Road, when you're talking about those sidewalks.
Let's see if I can get that a little larger. Trying to get that a little larger for everyone. I'm sorry. There we go.
No problem. If you want to talk about safety, the fact that there's no sidewalk from that blue line there all the way up to South Clark, I can tell you that's not safe. Because you have people from the Hope Center, you have people from that project, from the project Falcon.
Over here? Okay.
Who are walking up and down that road all the time in the street. Because when it's raining and snowing and everything else, they can't walk on the thing. And so I have customers that come out to me all the time and they complain about people in that street. So it seems to me that would be a top priority if we're so about safety. That's way more about safety, because these people are in the street. There's kids in the street that live down there in those duplexes. They walk up and they go to the movie, they come to my store, they're walking in the road.
And that's why it's on here.
There's no sidewalk there along Fairground, is there?
Down here?
Down here at the end, right there. Is there a sidewalk?
No, there's no sidewalk.
So if you go ahead and, and he's right, there probably should be a sidewalk in there. But right now, you, when there's sidewalks in the development, so if they're walking along, then they at least can follow a safer path than being out in the street.
What are you talking about further yet?
I'm talking about out towards South Clark.
Oh, you're talking about out here? I thought you were on the blue line right there.
I'm talking about the people that live there. Right now, what they're doing is walking out there. They don't have any sidewalk when they leave their establishment right now.
Yeah, okay.
They have to walk in the roads, the blue, and then they can walk in front of Hope Center, and then they go back in the road. All the way down there.
But that seems like a separate sort of, what's that have to do with the other thing?
Because we're talking about money.
Yeah.
We're not talking, this project, to me, you know, we made it out, there was comments last time, this is about this project or whatever. My problem is, is it's $90,000. It's $90,000 for something that to me is a want. And I agree with you, and a future development, great. But right now, is there any future development on the books for that place? No, there's not. And you're talking about $90,000, you could build that sidewalk there, but we're not going to build that sidewalk. Maybe down the road.
Will that be in our budget process, when we work on our budget process?
Well.
And were you at the budget meeting?
I was at the budget meeting. And we talked about this sidewalk. I've bought this sidewalk up many times. You can go back on videos here and see me bring up this very same spot.
Well, why?
And it's not, and all I get is, well, let's talk to the apartment complex. Let's talk to these people. If we have 90 grand to give these people, how long is that?
Yeah, but Chris, listen, Chris, that is a different part of the budget than what we're, than that is. And what you're saying is, we should take, we should not put in and take the money there and put there. That is your thinking, all right? So why don't we go ahead and consider the, why don't we go ahead and consider that extension there? Okay, where we're dropping the gas line, we should consider that first. Eventually, it's going to have to be done. I don't see, I don't, this is apples and oranges you're talking about, right?
It's, to me, it's not apples and oranges, it's just about safety. There's nothing that says we have to do that because it's in the budget.
You're talking about a separate project. That's not, we're not talking about this.
You're talking, this whole project is separate. This was not in the budget to do these gas mains. That's the first thing I started with, was this was not in the budget, period. So when we talk about this is a different budget item, it's a different budget item altogether.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me for a second.
May I have a floor?
You may have a floor.
Okay. The sidewalk you're talking about there, Chris, well, I agree with you 100%, because when you get to the blue sidewalk, it's grounded and falls off into a ditch. So everybody is on the street. It is maybe a different pot of money. I think Kenzie and Bruce have talked to the Mexico Apartments about cost sharing that sidewalk, which we don't have an answer on. Is that correct?
No, we do have an answer. They said yes.
They declined our offer to cost share at this point. The ownership is out of Farmington, Missouri. It's not local.
So maybe that's still not from somewhere down the road. I agree, that sidewalk needs to be cleared. But that's not exactly what we're talking about tonight.
It's only fair to mention before they ever built the street, that all the Birdland and home pass to the western, no sidewalk anywhere.
Right. And that goes back to the idea of poor planning doesn't really relieve poor planning now. We're trying to move forward with good, solid planning, and this is all part of that effort.
Something's poor planning, you suddenly have to go back and pick up the poor planning. Can't just say, well, it's poor planning, you're there.
Right. And that is absolutely true. Perhaps down the road, we'll be looking into that exact issue.
Well.
Down the road, I like that.
Okay, so I just have a couple of comments. I agree that yes, like Chris said, and I think Chris and Chris have said about the sidewalk meeting there. Unfortunately, that was approved by councils prior to most of us, I think, being on here. So again, it's about us moving forward and doing what we can do. All of us were at the budget meeting when we approved that Falcon Street should be a part of the budget and that extension of $55,000. Unfortunately, at that time, we did not know that, or we weren't aware that we were going to need to lower those Amarin utilities because we didn't have that easement. We shouldn't stop progress. The last time we brought this up in November, I shared my concern about why we're stopping this, trying to stop this project. It was asked if the complex, Teal Lake Complex, would cost share the sidewalks. We would be able to do it. At the time, before we did, before we, before we tabled it, that was the issue. And we were about to move a motion, and we said, we could not, we could not vote to approve Amarin, paying for, to have Amarin lowering the lines contingent on the sidewalk. They were able to go and ask the complex, and within a few days, the complex did get back and say, we'll do our share to do it forward. I think it is time that we do our part to make sure that all citizens, to the best of our ability, the council that is now present, to move forward with our projects that we had as planned. May I have a motion?
I move that we relocate the Amarin gas main for the Falcon Street extension project at a cost of $31,524.
Second.
Briggs?
Briggs? Yes.
Nichols?
Thinking about it.
The greatest amendment, yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Shivers?
Yes.
Williams?
No.
Motion carries. Now for the claims.
Moving for the claims.
Second. Briggs?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Miller? Shivers?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Now for council comments. Ms. Briggs?
Well, I got to use, I finally had to make a 911 call before Christmas. And I, when my husband fell on the ice and broke his arm, so I just want to thank the patrolman that came out, and he did a nice job, and so did the ambulance people too, so.
Chris?
Um, I don't have anything.
Nichols?
I just don't want people to think we're sending the presidents that if we start a project and it becomes too much money, we're going to keep on funding it just because we started it. But going on with that, I went to a lot of parties and functions and bankers in my life, but I had the best one of my life last Sunday. If you ever get a chance to go to your own retirement party, make sure you go. Anything everybody's ever told you about retirement is better than that.
Just rub it in.
Well, I have a question. At that retirement party, there was two ambulances sitting outside.
Realize what kind of shape I'm in.
Mr. Sligel?
Nothing this time, Your Honor.
Well, first, Happy New Year to everybody. Like I said, we have a lot of great things happening this week. Mexico will be hosting the Central Municipal League Meeting on Wednesday at Press or Performing Arts Center. We're going to be able to showcase some of the musicians and such from MMA. And this is the first time, I believe, we posted it. So we're asking us to be employees and council to be present, wearing our beautiful council shirts, so we can show them a taste of Mexico. Yeah, football games, basketball games, football games. I'm in the wrong season this weekend and on Wednesday. And I think that is the main thing, except for I do have a lunch with the mayor scheduled for January 30th. And that's going to be hosted by Jack.
One more, what do you think about those sheeps?
And of course, it was great getting to. And it was great getting to stop by for Councilman Nichols' retirement party. Wish I could have stayed longer, but good, great job for everything. At this time, we're opening the floor to the public. If you have something to comment, please state your name and address for the record and keep comments to a maximum of three minutes.
Hello, my name is Thomas Hugo. I reside at 205 East Jackson Street, New Mexico. And I've requested that no parking signs be removed on the side of the street where I reside. There's already partial and unpark, no parking in front of Jackson Street Drugs. And people park there anyhow, anyhow, so. Reason why I'm requesting it is because parks are disabled and I need to get to my residence and get out of my vehicle. It's almost impossible for me to do it on the backside of my vehicle, the building. So I've requested now for several months, and it's been disregarded last month. I'm not put on the agenda, and I just want to make sure that I show up for this time to make sure it does. And it's been spoken to, and Drew Willford has spoken to the hospital and the ambulance service, and they said they don't have a problem with the city ticking down the no parking signs. But there's been an issue with public safety, and I don't think how, there really should be, because nobody else, it hasn't been in a major emergency going down that road or even a fire truck has definitely gone down the road, I don't know, ever. So I don't see how that issue is going to be brought up. There's another issue about parking, but there's a developmental handicap. And I've brought letters from the other residents that live on that side of the street, but I don't want to press it too much time, but I got the names and people that would, would like to have parking on the other side of the street. So my request is that they remove this, no, no parking. I have another issue concerning with your issues about the Teal Lake sidewalk. You have a new residence there that's built, new, new development, and I have a friend that just has a lot of children. And there's a lot of residents that have a lot of children there and you're going to need a sidewalk now. So because there's people and kids that are walking down, walking down that road, if you don't get a sidewalk, they're going to be hit by a car. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else?
Second.
Briggs?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Shivers?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
John?